Ask you to stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to the November 1st, 2022 county commission meeting. I'd remind you to silence your cellphones. The meeting documents are in the back corner in a folder. And if you are planning to speak today, if you'd please sign in on our clipboard in the back with your name and address for the record. Then when you get up, you only have to give your name and your county of residence instead of your whole address. No election material is allowed in this room at this point, just because we have elections going on next door. And then just to remember to keep the noise down in the hallway to respect their voting. And with that, we will move on to routine business. Item number one is consider a motion to approve the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
I have a motion as second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number two is a consent agenda. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second with comment.
I have a motion with a comment.
I've just run under the personnel actions, one of our normally present individuals, Trish Olmos, is 25 years. And I see she's off to the microwave. Second string in.
Screen your microphone.
Trish's 25th anniversary with the county. She's our IT rep. And we have a second and alternate in today, not second string. But anyway, just wanted to recognize Trish for her 25 years with the county and thank her.
And maybe she's home watching and heard you.
I doubt it, but she probably is.
So I have a motion as second on consent agenda. Roll call vote, please.
Benega.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Barth.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Hiberger.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Now we'll move on to regular business. Item number 10 is public hearing to consider a liquor license renewal application for Monarch Lounge due to a liquor license compliance check violation by the applicant in the current licensing year. Kim Christensen.
Good morning, commissioners. Kim Christensen with the auditor's office. We have received the 2023 retail on sale, like liquor license renewal application for the Monarch Lounge. The public hearing is required due to the applicant having a compliance check in the current licensing year. The commission was briefed on this compliance check violation in November of 2021 during the regular commission meeting. The compliance checks last year were done after the commission already approved the licenses for this year's. The compliance check was conducted on November 16th of 2021. During the check, an employee did serve alcohol to an informant who was under the age of 21, thus breaking South Dakota codified law. For your reference, this is the second violation for the Monarch Lounge. The last violation occurred in 2004. And just for your reference, they did not, they passed this year's compliance check, which was done last week.
Thanks, Kim. Are there any questions for Kim? Okay, this is a public hearing, so I give an opportunity for Monarch Lounge to speak if they're here.
Their representative to call me yesterday is actually currently in the hospital and will not be able to attend. But they have spoken with the employee and are making sure they are checking the IDs.
You know if they have done the training?
I do not.
Okay. Is there anyone that wants to speak in opposition to this liquor license renewal? Okay, commission. You'd look for a motion.
Make a motion to approve the liquor license.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Is there any discussion? Commissioner Karski?
We do take this very seriously, the violations. And it'd be nice if they were present to answer questions. And sometimes things happen. Once every 20 years is still too much to have a violation. So, you know, just a word of advice to everybody that's serving alcohol. Have programs. Make sure your employees are well-trained. We don't want to have to call you out on the carpet for this, so I'll support the passing of this.
Okay, I have a motion as second. Roll call vote, Kim.
Karski.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Barth.
No.
Hiberger.
Aye. Motion passes four to one. Item number 11 is a public hearing to consider a liquor license renewal application for Safari Bar and Grill due to a liquor license compliance check violation by the applicant in the current year. Kim.
The auditor's office has received the 2023 retail on sale liquor license renewal application from Safari Bar and Grill. A public hearing is required for this application due to the applicant having a compliance check violation in the current licensing year. The commission was briefed on the compliance check violation during the November 23rd, 2021 commission meeting. The sheriff's office did a compliance check on November 16th, 2021. And during that check, an employee did serve alcohol to an informant under 21, thus breaking South Dakota codified law. This is the first violation for the Monarch Lounge. This current application was reviewed by the state's attorney planning and the sheriff's department. There were no questions or concerns, and they also did pass the compliance check that was held recently. As I stated earlier, the compliance checks last fall were done after the commission already approved the 2022 licensing.
And this was the first violation for Safari Bar and Grill. Any questions for Kim at this moment? Is the Safari Bar and Grill here, representatives?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. Wondering just what you're doing now and if you'd just tell us what's going on.
Sure. My name is Sandy Sorem. I'm one of the owners. It's a family business, one of the owners. This is Serena Campbell, our general manager.
Thank you.
So I am actually liquor serve safe certified. I got certified in March, I think it was, of 2021. So since the failed sting, I do hold like individual classes with my employees, do a training thing with them, make them take a test that they have to pass. And then I, obviously, when we have our meetings and stuff, I really iterate like how important it is to check IDs. If they look younger than 30, they need to card them. So we're really adamant on making sure that we're not serving underage kids.
Commissioner Karski.
So we don't do alcohol checks very often, once a year roughly. You recently passed one. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Did you give any incentive to the employee that passed?
I don't know that we give incentives.
We do. We do, actually. A hundred dollars. Remember Paul takes cash out of his pocket and gives, he'll give a hundred dollars.
Excellent. Good to hear. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Sometimes you really get chewed out by commissions, so this must be your lucky day. So is there anyone who wants to speak in opposition to this liquor license? I would look for a motion from the commission.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion as second. Any additional comments? Commissioner Barth.
Madam Chair, thank you. You know, back in the day, we were able to actually not let people have a license. Now it has to be referred to the state. And I remember there was a case in Del Rapids where the city suspended the beer license for a gas station. And it was appealed and, you know, they were able to sell beer during the time of the appeal. And 11 months later, when the judge ruled that the city was correct, they could not sell beer for a month. We don't really have that power anymore. We can just recommend. But, and I voted against last one just to show that unanimity isn't going to always rule on this type of a thing. We do take it seriously. And I've said this before, when I was younger, it was my job to buy liquor when I was underage. But now it's my job to stop it. So thank you for pulling up your socks.
And losing a liquor license in any business is detrimental, but then you look at the small communities who would lose their sales tax, and it's a big deal. So it's very important for small businesses in small communities to make sure they're doing it right. So I have a motion in a second to approve this liquor license renewal. A roll call vote, please. Kim's got to get up there. Thanks, ladies.
Karski.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Barth.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Hiberger.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Kim. Next we'll do item number 12. Whoop, we got a reverberation in here. Item number 12 is consider a motion to approve the 2023 liquor licenses. Thanks, Tony. Kim.
The auditor's office has received the 2023 liquor and wine renewal applications from all of the licenses outside of the municipalities within Minnehaha County. The applications have been reviewed by the state's attorney's office, planning department, and sheriff's department, and there are no questions or concerns. And none of these applications on the list have had a violation in the current licensing year.
Okay. Are there any comments from the public on any of these liquor licenses? Looking for a motion from the commission?
So moved.
I have a motion as second. Roll call vote, please.
Barth.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Hiberger.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Kim. Item number 13 is a presentation on the 83rd Annual Sioux Empire Fair. Scott Wick, good morning, Scott.
Good morning. Scott Wick with the Sioux Empire Fair, WA Land Fairgrounds. Thank you for the time this morning. We're happy to present the results of the 83rd Annual Sioux Empire Fair. And with me this morning are board members John Carroll, Joe Beal, and Art Nordstrom. So I sent that cover letter along to just hit a few highlights on some things we did differently. We had a very, very good fair. It was the first fair that I didn't get a call from the weather service about severe weather. And the first fair that I never received a call from the carnival operator about anybody goofing around or screwing around on the midway. So just from that aspect, I, you know, it's been, this will be the, I think, the 11th or 12th fair that we've managed. So that is very significant in itself. So yes, we had a very good fair. With the weather, it was a little rainy the first weekend, but the weather cleared up at night for the concerts. We did have five and a half inches of rain on the Saturday night. But during the day, it cleared up the rest of the week, and we were behind last year's numbers for the carnival going into Monday. However, with the remaining of the week, we ended up on top and did very well. So if we could move on to the... The scroll wheel there, just do that. Oh, we're scrolling. Okay, we'll do that. So again, as every year, we've been very, very lucky to have the same sponsors aside from adding Smithfield last year. So we had premiere weekend with First Premier Bank, Premier Bank Card, Smithfield Appreciation Day was Monday. Tuesday was Senior Appreciation Day, Grand Falls Casino Golf Resort. Of course, Wednesday is Ag Appreciation Day, and that's always been sponsored by Touchstone Energy. Thursday was BillionAuto.com Appreciation Day. And then the last Friday and Saturday were Ag Rules Weekend, sponsored by South Dakota Corn. Special events, obviously. Finally, we were able to play the Old Dominion Concert after three tries. So while that was a great concert, it was also very nice to see the buses leave. And their responsible agent, their head agent, actually flew in for the concert just to be there to see it finally happen. And then we also had the Nelly Concert, that was a paid concert. Dakota News Now broadcast live Monday through Friday from 4 o'clock on. They set up a permanent stage by the Pipestone Discovery Building. And then they also wandered the property, and we had four to six interviews every day with anywhere from food vendors to commercial vendors, 4H and FFA folks. So it really showed a good cross-section of what our fair is about and the people that attended. And then, of course, Wednesday was the Ag Appreciation Luncheon. They brought back the pork producers and cooked on-site, so that was a nice... I mean, just the smell and the aroma and the smoke going on. I mean, you definitely knew there was an event going on inside the grandstand. And of course, Bill Zortman was there for a couple days interviewing different folks around the area as well, too. It was a good year for livestock. We had 342 exhibitors. 703 had livestock. Exhibitors were up 29%. And livestock entries, as far as the animals, were up over 63% from 2021. One significant change we had is we moved the fine arts, excuse me, into the expo building, into the north room where it's air-conditioned. So in there, we had 4H static exhibits, we had commercial exhibitors, and we also had the fine arts folks were in there. So there's a few pictures of that. Our new superintendent, Thana Goff, did a great job. Very, very good with the marketing, social media, getting everything out there to let everybody know the contests that were out there. Great in raising sponsors and getting new people involved. There was 180 exhibitors with 1,249 exhibits. Commercial and food vendors, while our own staffing at the fair, we were just fine. We were very blessed and very lucky to have the folks that come back every year. They actually take vacation to work the fair. Staffing for commercial and food vendors was a challenge again. However, there were some very good positives. We had 34 total vendors renting 44 spaces in the expo building. 19 of those vendors were new to us, and they had a very good fair, so hopefully those are repeats. Last year, we had, I believe, 23 total commercial vendors in the expo, so that number is up. Outside rented spaces, we had 47 vendors that rented 81 spaces, and six of those were new. And there's been a little bit of change-up in the food truck and food service owners. A few of them have consolidated. So we have, we've had stronger numbers, but less owners, as some people are just getting to the age where they want to retire and not run the circuit all the time. Fairgrounds improvements over this last year. We added exit-only to the main entrance with asphalt path, along with a new ticket-selling booth. It was the second booth. The first day, we had the first one delivered, the first 100 mile an hour wind hit and blew it up like matchsticks, so we had to get another one. But that worked very well. We added asphalt backstage for the tour buses to park on in case we do get those rains. We also installed 12 new LED house lights on top of the grandstand. Typically, in the past, when the bands were loading out, we had to have portable generators with light towers to have it light enough to be safe back there to take the riggings down. The front porch received new shingles after the storm. One of the old tile barns was removed for the new building. We had to crush concrete to the north parking lot. I believe we brought in 25 or 30 side dumps, because when I came out on Sunday after the five and a half inches of rain, there weren't any puddles out there. Everything worked out great. It was good firm footing for people to park on. Midco pulled in fiber optic to the main entrance, so that was a big bonus to have that there as opposed to just having little jetpacks and Wi-Fi for our ticketing. And we are scheduled to have fiber ran to the north entrance yet this year, and then ran, run fiber to the grandstand and the box office south of the grandstand next year. As far as community service throughout the year, we continue to have the Faith Temple Food Giveaway. The grounds are used for police vehicle and motorcycle train throughout the year. Turkey-in-Hand giveaways over the holidays, Sioux Falls Cares, December Community Outreach, and the November Run for Food Event. So financially, going through the expenses for fair entertainment, as you can see here, we had a total expenses of $673,736. The bulk of that is always and will be at the grandstand, because that's where most of the entertainment is. But we have grounds entertainment. A big part of entertainment is production, which is the sound, sound light and staging for that. Our stage alone was over 25,000 more than last year due to supply and demand. And everybody's out touring, and there's so many stages in the country. So total expenses overall, we went through the entertainment. As you can see, payroll through beverage and everything, the cost of doing business, equipment rental. You know, professional service utilities are a big one. And then, of course, the insurance. The insurance is comprised of the liability insurance for the property just during the fair, and then also the insurance when we insure our concerts. So that's been a big part of the expenses. We had total expenses of $1,003,348.43. On the income side, we did very well this year. As I sent out in that letter, we were, we had, we were up $389,000 from previous year, which is great. Admission camp and carnival was almost $950,000. Beverage concessions were up. Sponsors, we haven't hit the level we have in years past, because not everybody has come back as strong as they have since 2020. Commercial vendors is respectable. Grandstand ticket sales, you know, we had two ticketed concerts. The concert that went through our ticket system was Nelly and also our pit passes, so people could be stage-front during our shows. So total revenue was $1,0834 for a net profit of $499,157. I tried and tried to hit that half million mark, but I couldn't come up with the extra money. But anyways, it was a very, very good nine days of a fair. Like I said, it just, it keeps getting better. It'll be very challenging to hit these numbers again. The property can do it, but it's going to take, it's going to take everything to line up again. So we, on behalf of the board and the staff, we thank you very much for all your support and happy to answer any questions you have about this year's fair.
Any questions for Scott? Commissioner Benega?
I just have a couple of comments. In addition to an obvious financial support that you have made to the community for the fair itself, the city of Sioux Falls generates tax revenue from that. The CVB gets room and revenue from that. The ag community is the number one related economic value to the state of South Dakota. So this is making a significant impression to the people that frankly are always involved. It's always amazing to me when I do get to go out there, how many volunteers are working. The fair board is actively engaged in all the activities for the seven, eight, nine, 10 days. It's always here. I think this is a community event that really benefits a lot of people that people don't actually realize, besides the fact that you had a significant net profit this year. That might be a record, and congratulations, you and your group.
Well, thank you very much. Yeah, I've always said we don't want to be the best kept secret, but even buddies of mine from school say, well, now that the fair's over, what are you going to do for the next 10 months? They don't realize we have 130 events out there every year. And once the task force and Charlie and Joel from CSL bring the report back to your group, I believe we're going to be very, very shocked at what the numbers are. So it's a significant part of our community, and yeah, we enjoy what we do. And we were planning for the next year's fair while 2022 is happening. Again, thank you very much for the support from you as commissioners. We appreciate it very much.
Commissioner Barth has a question.
Thank you. Scott, I've got to thank you, the board and your staff so very much for having a great fair this year. But we recently broke ground on another building. Could you just touch on what that building will be doing?
Yeah, that building is a 100 by 100 building that will cover the outside show arena that was on the west side of the property in the 4H area. And that building that I talked about that was removed, that was removed to accommodate for that footprint. So I've been working with Mark Trenz, and we received the suggestions from the engineers. We're going to bring in some fill to raise that elevation to where it needs to be for final grade. The lumber package is there on the ground, so as soon as we get that dirt hauled, then we have to have XL move one pole. Once that's there, it should be about a two-week build, weather permitting. But that's being built as an anchor building. We call it building on the future of the fairgrounds, because that can be expanded on, and that's the way it was designed. So that will be there to cover that outside show arena. As we know, the sun beats down pretty good during the summer, and that arena's not just used during the fair. That's for many other events that come in during the summer season. We just hosted the first South Dakota, which one was it, Joe? I forgot. The breeding sheep show. It was a national breeding sheep show. So there were 350 sheep that were there, plus all of their, all the folks that were there. Very few people camped, so they spent a lot of time in hotels, and they were here for three days. They expect that show to have over 1,000 head of sheep entered in it by year number three.
Madam Chair, so just to follow on, it's a roofed facility with open on the sides.
Yes, it's like a hay shed. So it has 20-foot sidewalls, but the walls only come down six feet. However, it's been designed to where you can enclose that as overhead door openings on the east and west side, two on the north, one on the south for future expansion.
It's a great improvement for that part of the fairgrounds. Thank you.
Definitely, yes.
Other comments? No? Is there any comments from the public? Not seen anyone move. Thanks, Scott, for coming. Thanks for the report, and congratulations on a great year.
Thank you very much.
Move on to item number 14, which is Lifescape Presentation. Jessica Wells.
Good morning.
Good morning, Jessica.
Do you need me to state my county?
Yes, just your name and your county.
Jessica Wells. My personal county is Lincoln County, but Lifescape is located in Minnehaha.
Thank you.
Thanks for letting me come in, talk with you again this year, and thank you for serving as commissioners. We appreciate your support at Lifescape. I'll let you know some of updates from last year on our mission and what we do. I don't know if I'm sliding or you're sliding here. The wheel on the last. Okay, here we go. Maybe. Okay. Started out as crippled children's in South Dakota Achieve with a groundbreaking in 1948. So we've been part of this community for a very long time. And as the children that we've supported and the adults we've supported have changed, so has our mission and our facilities as well. This is actually 26th Street looking, the kids are looking south. So of course, cornfields and the VA, you can see a little bit on the back there.
I wonder how many of those kids are still Sioux Falls residents.
I'm not sure. Every once in a while, we'll have some come back and visit, which is fun. We have a history wall in children's services and one in adult services. If anyone wants to take a peek a bit at our history, you're always welcome to stop in. We do, we have served over 3,804 children and adults across South Dakota. In Minnehaha County, 1,589. Most of the adults we support are from kind of Minnehaha, probably Lincoln County, their families. And they most all reside in Sioux Falls. But we do support almost every county in South Dakota and 40 different school districts. So do serve a unique need there. We have a small children's specialty hospital and inpatient rehab center. We're seeing more and more children who are just more needing that intense rehab. We are licensed for 18 beds. This last year, we have, last couple of years, have run about a full census of children, and we unfortunately do have a waitlist, which is hard to see. Most of the children on waitlists typically have ventilators or have that intense nursing, that intense nursing need. If they are not supported by us, they tend to remain in our hospitals, which is far more expensive to have them at Avera Sanford than in our level of care. Currently, right now, I believe we have six children waiting. The things that keep them in our hospital and not being able to be discharged typically tend to be rural health, home health. So a child may be discharged to their home family in Millbridge or even Mitchell, but not have the nursing care that can come into the home to care for them. We do try to support families in that training to get them home as quickly as possible. Kids tend to do better at home with their families. You'll see a common theme as I go through the presentation. One of our greatest challenges is staffing. So I'll touch on that a few more times. We have an intermediate care facility, which is our children's residential. We are the only licensed facility that, outside of, there's a small number of children supported in Redfield at the state institution there. We are licensed up to 96 children. Two factors, we have about 60 children that currently reside with us and attend school with us. Our limiting factors there, again, we have waitlists here. There are 13 children waiting, where their school district has identified they need the supports provided by Lifescape. But we, two factors, one, staffing. We don't have the direct here staff available. And then our facility as well cannot support some of those children in their high intense behavioral needs. Our specialty school, we do have some of the children who reside with us, attend school in our specialty school. And then we also have several day students that live with their families during the day and come in. Their school districts typically will bus them, and we have 94 children currently in our school. We also have outpatient services. We have three specialty care outpatient clinics in South Dakota, two in Sioux Falls. The Autism Child and Development Center over on 41st and Saratoma, primarily children with challenging behaviors, those with autism diagnosis. And then our outpatient center on Grange and 18th as well, and then one in Rapid City. This year, we did have to close a facility in Sioux City, Iowa, predominantly because of staffing. So those, we were able to find, help our staff find jobs with the local hospital. So those, we were able to find, help our staff find jobs with the local hospital and school district there, but unfortunately, the families that we supported in that region, there are very few providers. But that, we just could not make it work with staffing levels. And we have about two hundred and forty-five people a day come through those outpatient centers. We do have a for-profit arm of Lifescape called Rise Custom Solutions. We do orthotics, prosthetics, seating, assistive technology, a lot of equipment. This one, we do have a great relationship with the VA, both in our Rapid City facility and Sioux Falls, that helps support veterans in our communities as well. The, this is the Autism and Child Development Center. We do several autism screenings. We do have very long waitlists for autism screenings and unfortunately autism treatment. There are over two hundred and forty families across South Dakota waiting. And this is a case where if you have a two-year-old that you've identified isn't quite developing the same way as your other kids or their pediatrician suspects that there's some developmental delays happening, the evaluation typically is free and then incorporates a psychologist, an occupational therapist, a physical therapist, speech therapist, all together. That takes a large team. Again, staffing, psychology services across the state are very hard. We do contract with psychologists in Sioux Falls to support West River, so we're actually a little bit better in eastern South Dakota than western South Dakota. But those children, if we can help support them before they turn five, they can typically join their kindergarten class and be very typical kids with the supports to increase their vocabulary and their communication skills predominantly. Unfortunately, the waitlist right now is running about two years. So to catch those kids before kindergarten is getting harder and harder. Family Support Three-Sixty, this program helps support families in their homes so kids can stay with their families longer. Department of Human Services oversees this program with us. We have a hundred and thirty-nine families that we support. This helps them find resources in their local communities. The different, every family's got a little bit different needs, so we help assist with those. Our Pathways to Life, this is our sixteen and older children, young adults, really learning life skills and employment. We have fourteen children enrolled in that program. The demand for this program is actually going down. So this is one where we support some children but are not really expecting it to grow a lot. School districts are getting better at supporting these children in their own districts. So we're, I'm happy to see that, keeps kids closer to home. Supported employment, as we talk about workforce challenges, I know it's being experienced across our state, we do have adult-supported employment opportunities where an adult can learn job skills, have a job coach and other supports to help make them successful in their employment. Day services, this is predominantly out of our Western Avenue location. We have four hundred and eighty-nine adults that are supported in that program and do all kinds of different activities throughout their day. We just remodeled the recreation room and added pool tables and exercise facility and ping pong, a lot more activities happening there. And they also spend a lot of time out in the community. Adult residential, this is primarily where, we have forty different homes in Sioux Falls. I'll talk a little bit about a couple new ones coming up. Two hundred and sixty-two residents are in these homes and then we have another hundred and thirty-nine that are supported in their own homes. They may live with families and we just provide the, some different supports that they need to stay independent. Over three hundred different diagnoses are in our capacity to support at this moment of individuals we serve. A majority of them have three or more, so that's complex. We're getting further out on the fringes of, most people are able to be mainstreamed if they're in the middle of that bell curve. One unique thing about Lifescape is that we provide that care from birth through end of life. For a lot of our more clinical support services, the families would have to travel a long way to get that pediatric rehab care, some of that behavioral care. This is really tiny print, so some of our new things that we have going on, I mentioned the adult residential homes. We opened one in February, a Linden home up on North Fourth. We're very proud of these homes. We always look at the residential homes and think, would we live in those? Would we want our kids to live in those houses? Just because a person has a disability doesn't mean they deserve any less. And so we really have been working on replacing some of our homes, working with landlords. If we own the home, it's much easier to replace it. So we are now building these eight-person homes that are like a duplex or a twin home, four residents per side. They have a shared living room and kitchen, but they all, they all have their own bedroom, bathroom combination. So that one opened this last February. We have one opening on Ebenezer Avenue over by St. Michael's Church. That one will open in this coming February, so eight more residents will live there. We have our next house that, and most of this is funded through federal and South Dakota Housing Trust funds. And we are gonna, the next one is built in Harrisburg. And then we also have our last, we had a goal of replacing five homes in five years. Our last house is up in the northeast corner of Sioux Falls, so here in Minnehaha County. So we're very excited about that, proud about that as well. We're trying to address some of our workforce shortage, the autism services, that one's a heartbreaker to see those kids not get the supports they need. We have partnered with the University of South Dakota School of Medicine to start a master's program in board-certified behavior analysts. These are the clinical folks who oversee all of the autism programming and they have registered behavior techs that work under them that help implement the treatment. We started a program with them to, it's a long-term solution to a severe workforce shortage right now, but we expect that the first four will graduate from that program in this next year. It's a two-year program. And right now, we're able to support eight students in that and typically their social work, teaching. And then we've got our, we are N-Case, which is accreditation for our school, and we are also the recipient of an OPCA Freedom Award given by Orthotics and Presidics for the work that we do with veterans. Thank you.
Thanks, Jessica. Are there any questions for Jessica about Lifescape? Commissioner Barth?
So is the facility in Redfield still downsizing? Are they still kind of sending out their, the folks that they've been caring for?
They are. They have been on a plan for several years to continue shrinking that facility. Unfortunately, the individuals that are supported there are the highest need. Some of them we're not able to support, especially with our current facility, but...
Additional questions? Commissioner Kerski?
Remind me, if you know off the top of your head, how much financial support do you get from Minnehaha County? Is support from other counties based on population or how are counties funding or helping?
So Minnehaha County supports us at the five-thousand-dollar level. I am unsure how exactly that's determined. Lincoln County, I believe, is at the fifty-thousand-dollar level, although I'm pretty sure it's not based on population because of much more of our individuals live in Minnehaha County. But Minnehaha County has also got more population overall. So, yes, so those are the two primary counties that support. And that is where most of our adults also...
Do all counties provide any support to you then or not all of them?
I think, I'm just aware of Minnehaha and Lincoln. Primarily because of adult services. Children's services are predominantly supported through school districts, so in that case it'd be more on the education side.
Thank you.
Additional questions? Thanks, Jessica, for joining us. We'll see you again next year.
Yes.
Okay. I don't remember, or is there anyone that had a public comment on this? Not seeing anybody jump up, so. Item number fifteen is Forward Sioux Falls Presentation by Mike Lynch.
Good morning, commissioners. Mike Lynch, Executive Director with Forward Sioux Falls, located two hundred Phillips Avenue in the Commerce Center Building. Really appreciate the time this morning to provide a program overview and update of our initiatives. So Forward Sioux Falls is the partnership between the Greater Sioux Falls Chamber of Commerce and the Development Foundation. And, let me just get here, we were formed in nineteen eighty-seven, basically at the request of the business community with two main goals in mind. One was to diversify the economy and secondly was to take Sioux Falls from more of a regional hub to more of one with national acclaim. So it's an economic development program where we have investors and every five years we do a formalized campaign and we finished that a year ago in September. Currently, we have three hundred and twenty investors. Here is a list of our governance committee called the Joint Venture Management Group. It's comprised of the executive committee of both the Chamber and Development Foundation and then five at-large members. We meet quarterly and they do an excellent job of providing that oversight. So holistically, what Forward Sioux Falls has done and what our intention is, is to grow jobs, diversify the economy, and again, you know, continue to build up Sioux Falls as a great place to live, work and play, attracting companies, attracting people. This slide here is a funding comparison and the information was given to us by our campaign management company that we've had for each of the last eight programs. And it just shows the breakdown of their clients and what the national average is in terms of the breakdown of investors, public and private. And the main reason I show this is just to, I guess, emphasize that primarily this is a program funded by the private sector. Minnehaha County, and we thank you very much for your investment, along with the city of Sioux Falls, Airport Authority Board, Lincoln County, those are the primary public funders. But primarily, it is funded through private investment. So each five years, every five years, I should say, we freshly imagine the program and we determine the formulation of that program based on what our investors are telling us are the greatest needs. And oftentimes, we have carryover and as you can see there, probably no surprise that talent attraction, retention and development, business retention, expansion and attraction, innovation and entrepreneurship, and then business advocacy, as well as assisting the airport market their efforts and quality of place enhancement is within this current program, which by the way runs until April first of twenty-twenty-six. These are some statistics just from the last year and most of these, if not all, are derived from efforts from the Development Foundation because they are the primary organization within Forward Sioux Falls that's tasked with workforce development, workforce attraction and retention. There's been a concerted effort to really engage students at the middle school and high school level as well as post-secondary and we'll get into a couple of these efforts here in just a minute. Last week, we had a very successful win in Workforce Summit. Over six hundred and forty attendees gathered at the convention center, representing over forty organizations, a lot of high school students within those programs that were listed on the previous slide as well. Just an opportunity to get business leaders together, panel discussions, breakout sessions, best practices, just that, that engaging conversation that, that needs to happen within business. Career Connections is one of those programs that I'd like to highlight within the Development Foundation. And this is, this is a great program and in a previous professional life, I was a high school teacher and, you know, we had a very vibrant counseling department that really worked with a lot of internship and mentoring opportunities, working with businesses. However, Career Connections, I think, even takes that one step further because it, it really engages the student first on a level of shadowing. And if they have an interest in a particular sector such as banking, but maybe they don't really know much about the banking industry, they're able to go in and shadow a number of different positions within that business and ultimately determine what their, their highest, you know, level of interest would be. And then that's when they start digging down a little deeper into an internship and the, you know, the ultimate goal is to, you know, have that student carry through with this into a post-secondary situation and maybe even parlay that into, for example, like a Build Dakota Scholarship or some of the other scholarship opportunities that are out there. But just so they can kind of, you know, build upon that, that experience, that real-life experience. And this has turned out to be extremely successful. I will tell you that Career Connections has existed within the Sioux Falls Public School System at the high school level, as well as in Brandon Valley and West Central. Foundation Park is another one of the initiatives. And again, you know, Foundation Park, no secret by any stretch, but these are the projects to date. About half the acres have been sold. I believe Bob Munt, President of the Development Foundation, addressed you last week, I believe, so he probably provided a lot of details, so I don't necessarily need to, to dive too deeply into that, but very successful way to attract businesses. Again, you know, and Bob probably mentioned this, but in addition to Foundation Park, we have Park Eight, as well as the Discovery District and the Cyber IT Campus, which will definitely be a game changer ultimately, out at the Sanford Sports Complex, the DSU Cyber Security Complex, which ultimately will have probably five, an opportunity for five hundred high-paying jobs. And then we have Startups Sioux Falls, just right down the street, that is relocating from the Zeal Center out at, from Southeast Tech College. Having that downtown environment, I think, will really enable that organization to prosper. We talk a lot about recruiting businesses and that is extremely important. However, we can't forget about the existing businesses. So there is a dedicated business retention and expansion program also facilitated through the Development Foundation. Over four hundred contacts have been made in twenty-twenty-two. And again, just looking for, having conversations with businesses, determining what their opportunities are, what their challenges are, making those collaborative connections that, you know, we feel we have a niche in doing. And again, it's just very important that we make sure that, that we stay connected to the existing businesses that are, that are so prevalent here in Sioux Falls. SiouxFalls.com is a website that really is, is meant to be that landing page, especially for those who are considering moving to our community, maybe don't know a lot about Sioux Falls, but kind of that one-stop shop and has a number of different links to take them, you know, into areas where they can find relevant information if they want to, you know, live here, if they want to work here, what jobs are available, what quality of life amenities are there. So really continue to be excited about that. Business advocacy is one of our longstanding initiatives within Forward Sioux Falls. Every legislative year, we have full-time lobbyists who basically champions the interests of business and, you know, represents both Forward Sioux Falls investors as well as chamber members and Development Foundation members as well. I will also note that in the last year, through the Public Affairs Department, through business advocacy and the efforts of Forward Sioux Falls, we initiated a Diversity Equity and Inclusion Activator Series to assist individuals who are looking to learn more about the D E and I space. And there is, there are plans to also launch that again for a second year this year. And then finally, I would just put up here, and I mentioned a couple of these, but again, when you think about Forward Sioux Falls, it's that collective impact. It's, it's being able to take dollars that are invested and put them into a wide array of initiatives that we believe will have this collective impact. And these are noted on here. Sue Empire Housing Partnership, again, I mentioned the airport, I mentioned the, the Cyber Research Center. YPN, we have a very vibrant YPN within the chamber, over a thousand members. YPN, we have a very vibrant YPN within the Chamber, over 1,000 members. This Discovery District assisting with the shell building that is going to be going up out there. And I mentioned the Simulation Center, and then Sioux Falls Thrive, the Cradle to Career Initiative. So these are, we do this every, at the beginning of every program, we have projections, what we feel, based on that collective impact, what we can attain within the next five years. They're very robust goals, but we do feel like with a lot of the momentum that our area has established, and through the efforts, again, of that, of those collaborative programs, that we can achieve those goals. And with that, I thank you very much for your investment, and would entertain any questions that you might have.
Thanks, Mike. Is there any questions from the public? Okay. Questions in the commission? Commissioner Barth?
You know, I appreciate your comments today, and I know that growing the property tax base is so important. Sometimes people are resistant to development because they don't want that kind of a building here, but it keeps your property taxes down to have, you know, like an Amazon, which I think we assessed at 130 million last year, and it's going to be 160 million this year. That takes the place of millions of assessments against residential property, and I think other counties are lacking in commercial development, and we are not. So then I would also say, I'm concerned about our own brain drain, that where our kids go work in other states, because we don't have the appropriate position for them when they get out of university with a degree in chemistry or something. Is that reversing at all? Are we able to keep more of our own?
It is. Commissioner Barth, I don't have statistics handy with that, but I will tell you that we are heavily engaged with President Gestring, President Dunn, President Hurseth Sandlin, President Bradfield, President Jose Marie Griffiths, all of the universities, and in fact, they are all Forward Sioux Falls investors. So we definitely are seeing some improvement. I think Augustana and USF have always done a little bit better, just because, you know, I think their student population might, you know, be a little bit more from Sioux Falls. But yes, that's definitely something that we are trying to improve upon.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike, for your time.
Thank you.
Item number 16 is Consider a Motion to Authorize the Highway Department to Purchase Rotary Mower Equipment. Steve Groen.
Good morning, Commissioner. Steve Groen, Highway Superintendent. As you may recall, about a year ago, we made a decision to stop contracting out our roadway and ditch mowing, and we got a lead on a used John Deere tractor from Hennepin County in the Twin Cities. That tractor had flail mowers on. The two main types of mowers are rotaries, which would be similar to what you use in your house, and flails, which is a drum with a bunch of little blades on it. Since it came with flail mowers, we decided to give it a try for a year and see how it would work around here. And bottom line, it didn't work too well. Just get into electric fencing and other wires, it just wraps around the drums. We spent about $10,000 in repairs on it, so we've decided to go ahead and replace the flail mowers with rotary motors with your approval, and the rotary mower seems to work best in our ditches.
Questions for Steve? Questions from the comment, or from the potty of people? Nope. All right. I look for motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion of second. Oh, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Steve. Item number 17 is authorize a chair to sign the joint powers agreement between Minnehaha County and 16 partner counties for the Juvenile Detention Services. Jamie, good morning.
Good morning, Jamie Grabett, Juvenile Detention Center. Before you this morning is our five-year renewal for our joint powers agreement between our 15 partner counties that we provide services for both detention and shelter care for. All counties signed and returned, and I'm asking for your approval.
Okay. Questions from the public? Questions from the commission?
So Jamie, is this per diem that we're charging under this contract designed to cover the costs that we actually incur for housing?
This is not our yearly per diem contract. This is just our governing document for our partnership. The per diem contracts will be coming before you in December. I'm going to be working with Susan to make sure that we're covering costs.
Additional questions? Okay. I need a motion.
I would make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion of second with a roll call vote, please.
Bennega.
Aye.
Barth.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Heiburger.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Jamie.
Thank you.
Item number 18 is consider a motion to approve the waste, the solid waste permit 2202, for the purpose of operating a municipal solid waste fill at the property as legally described as Track One Sioux Falls Landfill Addition in the East One Half, Section 34, Township 101, range north, excuse me, range 51 west, and west one half northeast one quarter, with the exception of R1, and exception south 200 feet in Section 34- Township 101 North, range 51 west, and Track Sioux Falls, and Track One Sioux Falls Landfill Addition in Section 35 Township 101 North, range 51 west, all in Minnehaha County. Kevin, I read them all.
Good morning, and I'm Kevin Hookman from Minnehaha County Planning Department. The Planning Department administers the Minnehaha County Solid Waste Ordinance, and as the ordinance requires, all solid waste permits have a renewal every five years. The Sioux Falls Regional Landfill is up for renewal, as the last time it was renewed was in 2017. The current permit expires on December 12th, so that the new permit, when approved, would pick up right when the last one, next one expires. The Sioux Falls Regional Landfill has had continued conditional use permits on the site since 1978, and there's been two expansions of the site in 1995 and in 2001. So the current facility is operating under that 2001 conditional use permit. Since 1995, the operation has had six solid waste permits as it renews. And since the 2017 permit renewal, the city has acquired 17, or 73.43 acre parcel on the northwest of the site, and that they're using for buffer for neighboring properties. I will note at this time that if the landfill operations was to expand into that 73 acres, then a new conditional use permit would be required for that expansion. So as this is a renewal, action is needed to either approve or deny the solid waste permit 2202 for the Sioux Falls Regional Landfill, and to authorize publication of the notice of permit issuance.
Okay. Questions for Kevin? Commissioner Karski?
Kevin, has the city shared with us over the next 20, 30 years what the footprint of the landfill will look like? Are they expecting more expansion? Anything been told to us?
So in the current expand, or the current permit that they're presenting here, it is just the current footprint, and maybe the city can expand or say if they have any plans for further expansion in the future, but right now, what we're approving is just the current.
Yeah. I'm just thinking long-term. Is that footprint going to get much larger in size, or was it designed at the point where it's kind of going to be where it is now?
So we have the city here, so I was just going to give an opportunity to speak. So we were asking Kevin questions, and so city, if you want to get up and speak a little bit about the landfill, that'd be great.
Yeah.
Good morning. Luke Roedig with Burns &amp; McDonald. I work on behalf of the City of Sioux Falls as their engineering consultant. The current capacity, as currently permitted for the landfill, goes out to 2076 in the current footprint. And so, yeah, future expansion, we would typically look at 30 years, within 30 years of that capacity being reached, we'd be...
So we're 50 years out, so it's way beyond my life expectancy. I'll let somebody else worry about it, so...
That's what I was going to say. I'll be long dead by then. Thank you. Any, anything else you want to add?
This is just a simple renewal. There haven't been any major modifications since 2017, so, other than what's been noted in our renewal application, so...
All right. Thanks, Luke. Is there anyone else in the public that wants to comment on the landfill? All right. I look for a motion from the commission.
So moved. Second.
No other comments? All, roll call vote?
Barth.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Bennega.
Aye.
Heiburger.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Item number 19 is consider the bid results and award recommendations for the public defenders and human services renovation projects, and authorize a chair to sign an agreement between Henry Carlson. The bids were opened on August 10th, 2022. Mark Krantz.
Good morning, Commissioner Mark Krantz, Facilities Department. Yes, on October 10th, bids are open for renovations of public defender lower level and the human services front desk. We received one bid from Henry Carlson LLC for the amount of $643,200. Contract has been reviewed by the State's Attorney's Office, requesting commission authorization for the chair to sign the contract between Minnehaha County and Henry Carlson Construction LLC for the public defender lower level renovation, human services front desk renovation. None of any questions?
Questions for Commissioner Barth?
When is this project expected to be complete?
It's approximately five-month construction timeframe.
I'll be gone.
We have some of our public defenders displaced as we get this project done, so they're chomping at the bit to be done, too, so...
I'd make a motion to approve and a comment.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any public that wants to comment on this? Okay. Commissioner Karski.
I know for a fact, public defenders offices, like you said, chomping at the bit, and in the interest of not slowing this down even one more minute, I just want to get it approved.
I have a motion and a second with a roll call vote, please.
Herski.
Aye.
Barth.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Bennega.
Aye.
Heiburger.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thanks. Thank you. Item number 20 is review of the Financial Action Network's charter.
Good morning, Tyler Clark, Commission Office. So in 2017, Minnehaha County established the Financial Action Network, or FAN, which was made up of community members with expertise in finance and accounting, along with staff from the Auditor's Office and the Commission Office. Primary purpose of that group was to receive an outside perspective on the county's finances and receive some guidance on steps to take moving forward in the next five years. The scope of the FAN was five years, like I mentioned, so we're looking out to 2023. At this point, it makes some sense to reconvene that group to look out again towards the next five years, to get some of that valuable feedback on what prudent steps look like next. So included in this memo is an updated FAN charter, along with the original charter, which outlines the goals, scope, project milestones, and members. I would point out that some of the original members are no longer in Minnehaha County, and depending on the availability of the original members, there might be some need to consider alternatives, alternative members. There is also a position for a commissioner to serve as the chair of the FAN, and the request for you today is to get some feedback on the proposed charter, guidance on membership, and direction regarding overall goals and scope.
How many members did we have? I see on your proposed, or your updated one, we have a list of members, and I'm assuming the ones that are no longer around here have been removed? And so how many did we have originally of community members?
I believe there was 15 total individuals in the original.
And did that include our staff, or not?
That includes staff, yeah.
Okay. And so we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 12. So we might need maybe two or three more members added to this.
Commissioner... Have you reached out to all these folks that are listed?
Not at this point.
Okay. So they probably shouldn't be listed until we actually get their permission to put them back on, but anyway, I mean, I think it is a good list, and I do think, even if we didn't necessarily need them to match the exact number, it would be good to add a couple of new people, you know, maybe kind of look at the different industries represented, the age groups, the different constituencies, you know, geographically. I know, I noticed we have representatives from a couple of cities. I think it might be helpful to have a representative from one of the school districts. I think their budgeting is similar to, in the sense that they have a similar tax base. And I also just think it would be helpful to, you know, maybe reach a little deeper into the, into the age pool, and maybe, you know, add a couple of people more in their 30s and 40s, so that, because they're the folks that are going to be paying these taxes for the long term.
And we are probably, I'm not sure when we're going to bring this forward to sign. I think Tyler, if you just work on the membership, and then I would suggest that if you have someone you'd like to suggest to Tyler, that you at least, you know, give him those names, and then think about which commissioner you want to put on here as a sponsor. Commissioner Barth and I also, neither will be here. Commissioner Karski chaired this before, and so I'd say that's a possibility, but I think that the three that are definitely going to be here need to decide if they want to be on that, and if it's, so maybe talk with Tyler, talk to me, and we'll see if we can get this finished up before the end of the year, and at least get it going forward. I don't know that we'd be able to get them together before the end of the year, just as a lot of things going on, and everybody's going to be busy with holidays, so probably happen after the first of the year. Commissioner Bennega?
I just wondered if it would be okay to reach out to these folks to see if they're interested in serving again first quarter next year, possibly?
Yeah. Commissioner?
And I would suggest, even this morning, I had breakfast with Dean Bucknerberg, and he kind of did a ad hoc a little bit last week or week before with the Facilities Task Force, so if these people aren't interested, and Keith Severson, Bob Timian, I know all these people and meet with them regularly, to even ask if they would be interested or to recommend maybe someone of a different generational set, a little younger, I guess, but these are all good people, and I think we would have interest in, yes, several of them maybe are retired, but they have the time to do it, too, so that's, that's real critical to what we do, so...
We'll see what Tyler comes up with, conversations with these people that we already have listed. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Thanks for bringing it forward.
Thank you.
Was there any comments from the public? This is next is the opportunity for public comment. Is anyone here that would like to speak in public comment? Commissioner Liaison reports. This next week is Election Day, so there is no commission meeting on the 8th, and it will be, I think they're going to actually be doing election stuff in this room, so this room won't even be available next week. Are there any...
And during that election stuff, they'll be able to look through the window, but not come in, right?
I believe it. I mean, the curtains will be up farther.
Kim just said.
Yep. Non-action commission discussion.
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Barth?
I got a couple of things I want to mention. One is that we don't talk about the bills as much as we used to, and I kind of regret that, but today's bills, which were pretty modest, less than 500,000, included 81,000 in food for prisoners. And so, you know, we do look at the bills, the Auditor's Office looks at the bills, department heads look at these bills, and we are stewards of our taxpayer money. Secondarily, I just want to touch on the landfill. You know, the county is the service station for government. We are the bones of what goes on, and having a landfill permitted by the county, every time we take our garbage to the curb, we are doing business with the county, in a sense. And thirdly, I'll just say that a friend went to a concert at the Levitt, saw a huge line at the multicultural center, and apparently, there was a Mexican comedian in town. I heard nothing about it, but the place was packed, apparently, and so we maybe need to know more about what's going on.
Any other non-action? Okay. Then I would look for a motion to recess for 10 minutes, and then we have immediately followed by an executive session.
Removed.
Second.
And motion of second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. You're adjourned.